Ready to roll?
Yes, sir.
All right, awesome. So we got the cameras going. That means everybody's got to behave, right? So we will start the meeting out with a roll call.
Clerk.
Councilmember Kohler.
Present.
Councilmember Gallagher.
Present.
Your cross on Fockfield is excused for the night. Councilmember Beener.
Present.
Councilmember Draper.
Here.
Councilmember McMillan.
Here.
Mayor Higginson. Here. Thank you for that, clerk. We have a quorum of the number of councilmembers present, which will enable us to continue with the meeting and move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could all please join us. Pledge of Allegiance.
We have a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before moving any further, it's nice to welcome our city attorney, Morgan, back after having a baby. So she's got a great home at home. Almost two and a half, oh, two and a half months. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome back. Next council, we have our approval of consent agenda. Just so it's clear, consent agenda contains items that don't require deliberation. We all had these items in advance of the meeting. So therefore, I will read them and then ask for a motion. Those items included in that consent agenda are the approval of the August 25th special council meeting minutes, the approval of the September 8 regular meeting minutes, the approval of the City Hall heat exchanger and the resolution to adopt and amend the FY 2526 budget at an amount of $38,800, and then multiple department head committee and commissions reports, namely the City Clerk and Building Department, the Infrastructure Committee and other status updates, the manager and public safety report, the municipal court report, the parks and recreation report, and the public works report. Is there a motion?
Motion approved seconded by...
Seconded by Councilmember McMillan, seconded by Beener. Clerk, can you please call that roll? Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Councilmember Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember Beener.
Yes.
Councilmember Draper.
Yes.
Councilmember McMillan.
Yes.
Mayor Higginson. Yes, motion carries. We have adopted our consent agenda with the items that were named. Next, community is our public comment portion of the meeting, which is basically our invitation to dialogue with one another. I'd like to say we could pretend we're on somebody's porch or talking over the fence, but we don't get to talk back and forth. We only get to hear from you this evening, which can be frustrating, so I always like to explain that. But whatever issue you might bring to the table, we will be certain to get an answer to you and to the appropriate avenue. And this, there are two public comments portions of the meeting, the first of which is dedicated only to items that are contained on the agenda. So this would be your time to speak of those items. If you prefer to discuss or bring something to our attention that is not on the agenda, then you, that would be most appropriate under item number 10 at the end of the meeting. Just as a reminder, we ask that you approach the podium. You have three minutes to speak, and we ask that you share your name and, if appropriate, the street that you hail from. So with that, we will open the public comment portion of the meeting and see if there's anybody here who would like to be heard. Ms. Knatchke, welcome.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kelly Knatchke. This is in relation to the shoreline restoration that's going to be presented later on in the agenda, but I wanted to just, it's just a recognition of today being Indigenous Peoples' Day. So I just wanted to express gratitude to the original caretakers of this land on which we gather. Southeast Michigan holds the largest Native American population in the state and the 10th largest in the country. It's been cared for for generations by the Anishinaabe, the Three Fires group, a longstanding alliance of Ojibwe, Ottawa, and Potawatomi groups. In Grows Point, we live on land that was once cared for by the Sauk, Fox, and Kikapu tribes. So as we work to restore native plants and habitats today, I just wanted to remark that we continue their legacy of respect, responsibility, and fostering relationships with the land. Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to be heard? Yes, Mr. Gleason.
Hi, good evening. Pac Gleason, 895 Beacons Field, but I'm speaking tonight as the Secretary for the Recreation Commission. Later on this evening, you will hear a presentation from Jim and Kelly on the Shoreline Restoration Project. They made a similar one last week before us, and while we didn't vote on it and the meeting minutes aren't official yet, I just wanted to express that they did a wonderful job in both presentations, and all of the members present had an enthusiastic response to both presentations and what we can do as a body to support that. So both as an individual and as a representation of that group, I wanted to speak in advance of that, wishing them the best, but there's no luck needed. They did a great job then, and I know they'll do that as well tonight. Thank you.
Other comments? Yes, welcome.
Hi. I'm Lindsay Studders. I'm here to support the Patterson Park shoreline restoration project. Excuse me, I was rushing to get on the stairs. You won't have, you won't find better volunteers than Kelly and Jim and the team over at Patterson. It's incredible what they're doing. You should honestly let them do whatever they want. They're great.
Thank you, Lindsay. Anybody else? I will take a moment of liberty and just add to Ms. Knatchke's comments and point out the fact that we in Grows Point Park are fortunate to have the Fox and the Bean massacre memorial as well at Windmill Point Drive, which a number, to Lindsay's point, dedicated volunteers and generous people made that dedication happen. So if you haven't had an opportunity to go and reflect, I urge you to do that, and it certainly brings a lot of meaning to you for today as well as every day. So thank you for that reminder. Closing the public comment portion of the meeting and moving into council approval of the regular agenda, is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Beener. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Kohler. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, if you could please call that roll. Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Councilmember Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember Beener.
Yes.
Councilmember Draper.
Yes.
Councilmember McMillan.
Yes.
Mayor Higginson. Yes, motion carries. We have adopted our regular agenda with no changes, which takes us to our new business. First up is our Public Safety Awards. I would like to welcome our chief to the table here and to the podium because tonight we have the honor of recognizing what quick thinking and good training can do and can certainly mean the difference between life and death. And I think it's fair to say, chief, that a lot of the, why we have the success and celebration tonight is duty of leadership. So welcome and please kick us off.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of council, people in attendance and people watching online. Before I get to the main event, this is my one-time speaking tonight, but I would like to take this opportunity to say a quick thank you to Councilmember Gallagher for her service on council for the last four years, for her support of public safety, and you're a friend of public safety, so thank you. First of all, I would like to welcome those that are watching, especially the Shifting family who are here in person. I have James, Cindy, Elle, George, Ernie, and Sam. I think I got everybody right. So welcome. It is my privilege tonight to acknowledge and award two members of your Public Safety Department with one of the highest department honors that can be bestowed upon them for their actions on August 25th. All too often, the term hero is used open-handedly. Tonight, that word holds special meaning, not just for the two members of the department but for the Shifting family and their son Sam, who will forever be tied to the event on August 25th. So if I could ask Officer Jesse LaFreniere and Dispatcher Rachel Young to please come On August 25th, at approximately 8:30 in the morning, officers were dispatched to the 1100 block of Grayton on a report of a two-year-old child choking on a grape, not breathing. Officer LaFreniere was the first to arrive on the scene. Upon entering the residence, he located the child lying in the second-floor hallway. Child was not breathing. Officer LaFreniere immediately sprang into action, lifting the child and turning him over to administer black back blows. When this had no effect, he turned the child over again and delivered abdominal thrusts. The abdominal thrust did not fully dislodge the obstruction, so Officer LaFreniere again placed the child prone and administered additional back blows. These efforts began to dislodge the object and continued back blows until freeing it completely. Child then resumed breathing and began crying forcefully. Officer LaFreniere placed the child in the recovery position until care was transferred to MedStar upon their arrival. MedStar units transported Sam to St. John's Hospital for evaluation, where Sam was later pronounced to be in stable condition. Officer LaFreniere was directly responsible for administering these lifesaving measures that resulted in favorable outcome of our Sam. Child was experiencing an immediately life-threatening emergency that had already placed him in mortal danger, and the outcome would almost certainly have been fatal without his intervention. Equally important during this event are the actions of Dispatcher Rachel Young. Upon review of the 911 call, Dispatcher Young was found to be exceptionally efficient in gathering critical information and deploying lifesaving resources to the residents. Furthermore, she provided vital first aid instructions to Cindy, who despite being understandably distraught, she was able to render some aid prior to Jesse's arrival, all thanks to Dispatcher Young's guidance. In a moment where seconds meant the difference between life and death, Officers LaFreniere together with Dispatcher Young demonstrated extraordinary courage, skill, and dedication. Because of their efforts, Sammy is alive today. Their actions embody the true spirit of service. Both Officer LaFreniere and Dispatcher Young reverted back to their training, which directly resulted in the successful effort to save Sam. After a complete review and discussion by the Public Safety Awards Board comprised of three members of the department, it is my honor to present the Department Lifesaving Before we break. He wants permission. It is truly the embodiment of the spirit of the dedication that your public safety team has. And at a time like that, they simply revert back to their training. There's no time to think, there's no time to second-guess yourself. You just, you just fall back on what we do day in and day out. And you see on the annual reports and in my, in my other reports that, you know, it seems like we're always doing some sort of training. We literally did airway obstruction training within the last couple of months. So it's a great refresher, and Jesse was obviously put in the right place at the right time. So, thank you.
Out of curiosity, chief, I went and looked at my calendar and see what I was doing on August 25th at 8:30, and I was in a meeting while you were saving lives, you and Dispatcher Young. So thank you so much. And there are so many people I think that need to be called out as well. I think Elle, Sammy's sister, I don't know if you all read the article, but she had just completed babysitter training, which included CPR and the like. So she too stuffed right in and knew exactly what to do. In fact, I reached out to the war memorial and invited them to come tonight. They unfortunately couldn't make it, but they're so proud of you, Elle, and being part of that. So I think you deserve recognition as well, the maturity that you showed. And then, of course, mom, you kept your cool, Cindy, talking to Rachel, and I think you and Elle were quite a team while she even needed to go outside and welcome, make sure that Officer LaFreniere knew which house it was. You also, and James, the email that you sent us all was so beautiful. It was titled, "When a Cry Brings the Community to Life," and you could just feel the passion of parents who've been through such trauma and the gratitude that you had felt and how you called out your neighbors as well. I believe, are any of them here tonight? The Dulas or the Robinsons or Babysitter Sue? I think those were all folks who were part of this, this magical moment when all the stars aligned to make sure that Sammy stayed with us. And so I was trying to think of a way to really cultivate this moment. So I found a bunch of grapes. You know, I started looking up the meaning of grapes, and it's, it's really quite powerful. They're seen as symbols of abundance, prosperity, blessings, and new life. Who would think, right? That it was something that almost took his life, but now. And so I think each of the people we just called out, probably more, are in this bunch of grapes. And I brought scissors. I was gonna like nip them at hand, but I thought, you know what? Sammy should have this and just know that this bunch of grapes are really what saved his life. And I think what, at one time was a terrifying situation, really brought our community together and showed how important it is to be exactly that, a community. So thank you and congratulations, and I think we all probably want to cry, just, you know, knowing, and Morgan, you being a new mom, you probably...
I'm crying.
...feel a lot as well. So I have these back. See, are you ready? Make you a better arm than I do?
No, you gotta...
Ready, bud? You gonna catch these? Okay. Whoosh. They have a suction cup. You can put them on your window all the same time. Council, do you have any thoughts or comments about what we've, have the honor of celebrating tonight?
Yes, you said it very well. Chief said it very well. I mean, this is what you guys train for, and I'm so proud to be able to say that Grows Point Park is ready for anything. And here's a great example. Like I said, that's why you train. Sometimes you probably wish you never had to use some of the training that you're training for, but you do it anyway because you need that refresher. And if you didn't train, and you didn't do this till like five years ago, you might have a lapse of forget, because a lot of us went through training here too. I know that if that were to happen in my situation, last time I went through training was like seven years ago. It might be different. So thank you very much for everything you do. I really appreciate it. I know the family does, the community does as well.
I have a three-year-old and a one-year-old. Really choke it back a lot here because, you know, I read about this when it all happened and, you know, how often we've had, anybody's had kids and seen them cough and choke on something, you know, little bit here and there. And I was worried about what could really happen. And I see you guys driving around, I see the cars, and I know what you guys do and everybody thinks about what public safety does. But when you hear about something like this, it strikes so close to the heart. And since this has happened, every time I see you guys, I just think about this and I feel so much safer. I feel so proud that there's people like you that are up and down the streets and right around the corner that are here for us to keep our families safe, keep our kids alive. And I can't thank you enough. I'm so honored to be of service to you this time.
You going to decide?
As Councilmember Draper said, I have very similar circumstance. I've got a two-and-a-half-year-old and a four-year-old, and when I heard about the story, I met Jesse and saw him, and I have to say, Jesse, Rachel, you guys are my heroes. Because I think about what could happen to my kids and think about what we do, and I just want you to know the appreciation and gratitude and, you know, at the end of the day, you know, it's, I'm sorry. I just want to thank you. I truly do.
If you both could stand up again, I think it more, it's, and I see you have your families here too, and actually our whole team. I mean, you all, I'm sure in similar circumstances would have performed just as well, but surely. Can't put a price on what you all have accomplished. Thank you. Anything else, chief? Anything else, council?
I'd love to say something.
Yes, it's Gallagher. Thank you.
I just want to commend you both as well. I know in those moments when this situation happens is apparent, it's a panic moment and you just, you know, you just freeze. And it's true, what happens in these moments, it's fight or flight, and it's, some folks will just dive in, like your daughter, who was taking training and she just jumped right in because she knew what to do. And it's, it's so exciting to see that, to see that. And to have our police department and our public safety there immediately to take care is really important. An experience that I had one time, I was in a restaurant and a family of six were having dinner. There was a young girl in a, in a high chair, and she started to choke on a hot dog. And the entire table, the parents, everyone just left, the mother crying, and she just didn't know what to do. And the father was trying to break the high chair and couldn't do it. And I was just standing there with my infant and just in this panic about what if it was mine? And I gave it to this woman, said, hold my, hold the baby, you know, pulled her out and just started hitting her on the back. But in those moments, I never had any of that training as you do, and thank God you do and it's second nature, but those moments of watching that panic and not knowing what to do and wanting to help and just to have everyone come together and then to have all you do that, it's really an incredible, it's an incredible thing to see them breathe on the other side. And then that immediate cry is just something that you welcome. So I'm, I'm happy that it all just worked out so well for everyone and hats off to our Public Safety Department and to both of you for, for living what, what it is that you want to do and having it become a reality. It's, it's a wonderful story to tell and it sends a lot of other communities. So thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmember Gallagher.
All right, I'll keep us posted on little Sammy's life because God obviously has quite a plan for him. So, all right, thank you, everybody. All right, so chief, you're just gonna stay, huh? Let's see, next item up, council, is temporary traffic control order number 244. I will get a motion on the table. The motion is to approve temporary traffic control order number 244 for a period of 90 days relative to Hampton and the 1,000 blocks of Waverne, Maryland and Lake Point. Are you making the motion, Councilmember McMillan?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Draper. Chief.
Come here. Before you, the city is considering implementing a residential permit parking program specifically on Hampton and the 1,000 blocks of Waverne, Maryland and Lake Point. This proposal is part of our proactive effort to address the potential parking challenges associated with upcoming developments in the area, particularly the anticipated opening of the SCOP Center for the Performing Arts. While the SCOP Center is going to be a cultural asset to our community, we understand that it may bring some traffic and some other on-street parking demand. So in response, we're exploring the parking management strategies with a focus on prioritizing residents' street parking needs and minimizing the inconveniences to our neighborhood residents. The details of the on-street permit parking would be as such, like I said, it would be for the streets of Hampton and the 1,000 blocks of Waverne, Maryland and Lake Point. Two permits for each residence and each multifamily unit, and this is, remind you, remind you this is for on-street parking. It has nothing to do with driveway or alley driveway parking, just strictly on-street parking. The enforcement would be 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM, Thursday through Sunday. Those coincide with the performance schedules for the SCOP Center. Initially, there would be no fee for the, for the two initial stickers per household, per residence. If you need a new one or you lost a permit, it could be subject to a $10 fee. Enforcement would start after approval from city council and notification to the residents and give them proper notice and give us time to get a proper count, the number of stickers to get, get done, and then we would, we would send that out. We would, we'd simply just ask for approval for residency, the vehicle registration, that vehicle information, so we could, we could log and keep track of the parking permits. This is a temporary order, so unless, this would expire within 90, within 90 days unless the council makes it permanent. So it gives us a good, a good chance to, to test it and see if it would be good for the residents of the neighborhoods. As I said, you know, we're, the city and the Department of Public Safety, we're committed to balancing these new developments and, you know, the neighborhood needs. We recognize that on-street parking is, is at a premium and with the higher volume that the SCOP Center could potentially bring till, you know, the full parking lot is, is developed, understanding that there's other plans, you know, to have other arrangements. But this would give residents some pause or some, some comfort, knowing that, you know, all the spaces in front of their house are not, are not to be taken by patrons of the SCOP Center. Any questions?
All right, if any questions or comments, Councilmember McMillan?
What I didn't see was where the stickers may be applied on the windshield or where do they apply the stickers?
Most likely, they will be designated to be on the, on the driver's side of the front windshield.
Yes, Mr. Draper.
First off, I think it's great that you guys are doing something like this now and not after the SCOP Center opens. So thanks, chief. I appreciate you guys bringing this forward to the residents. A couple of questions I have about it though. Are there going to be signs on the street? Okay, so you got signs on the street, and then if I understand, then the residents are going to come and pick up the stickers as well? Okay. Do you have a timeline when maybe those will start to be ready to be picked up, stickers?
Once, once we get approval, I can go ahead and order the stickers and depending on the turnaround, then we can put a notification out and have residents coming into public safety to pick up their stickers.
And then assuming things do go well, you're going to come back and ask us to make it permanent, right? Is that the plan if it goes well? Okay. And then at that point, we'll be able to report a little bit on citations, things like that. And then what I'd be really interested in seeing, if there's a lot of extra vacancy as well, because I mean, with any good rule, sometimes it could be maybe overkill. I don't know. And then when it says here, as needed basis for guests, is there any, like, would that be something like a, like a hang tag or something that people could get?
Or something that they would put in their dashboard. So if, if somebody's having out-of-town guests come in for, for the weekend and, you know, they're only going to be there for the weekend, they, they're not appropriate for a sticker, but we can give them a temporary placard that they would fit into their, on their dash and that we would have an expiration date.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other questions, comments, or...
All right, all right, chief. I got a few for you here. And if I'll start with, wait, you're gonna have signs up kind of, you know, and I go back to my Chicago days, we had this up all the time, it's second nature, a lot of us there. But as we put this temporary traffic control in place, obviously the assumption there that it goes forward, what's the signs gonna be like to make our neighbors aware of, you know, what's, what's happening and then how to procure the guest pass as well?
Should we get approval tonight, order the stickers, then I'll get with my DPW to design the sign, and then I can get a picture of that and we can throw that on social media and we can put it on all the platforms to, you know, expect, expect this, to see this sign, you know, on these blocks and tell them the reason why and then, you know, how to go forward with, with, with getting the stickers.
Yeah, it's perfect. Because I think, like, you know, I know, you know, like block parties, right, kind of like the block captain there. I know there's a way we engage somehow with, you know, identify people in any means we can that are the block captains that can go and nudge their neighbors, inform their neighbors, talk to their neighbors, right, as far as what's happening there, because obviously, even doing all that, we're still going to have some issues, especially when we roll this out officially. There are going to be people asking questions there. We just, we know that's what's going to happen. That's the nature of the business that we're in, so to speak, there on us. It's good that it's temporary as well. Obviously, I think it's a good plan to talk about the execution, what we're talking about here. What we also prepare for is the what about us that's going to happen, because we're going to have it here for certain city blocks, and then others are going to say, well, what about us? Because they're going to say, why not, they're going to come to the 1100 block and park in front of my house. And the 1200 blocks will say, they're going to my house, right? So we're going to have that probably never-ending there. We just are probably thinking as a body, how we want to talk about that there, try to figure out as we get real data, as the SCOP Center opens, right, what we're seeing with the other parking needs, really what the issue is, which we, we talked about as a body there, kind of address those needs. This is being very proactive. I know it's temporary and I know we'll adjust that. We've always been good about doing that. You and your team have been doing that as well, all right. We haven't gotten to it yet. We will, just want to talk about it now, like from the enforcement perspective of it there. And I'm going to preach that we have great immediacy in the enforcement, right? What I mean by that, a couple of things, when there's not an event at the SCOP Center, right? Maybe we'll be a little more lax on the enforcement stuff on those days, right? Just because the purpose of this is mostly built around, we're trying to get patrons that park in front of our neighbors.
There's an air of common sense, this whole thing.
I know that, yes, yeah.
So, you know, first week, two weeks, month, or whatever, we go around, if we get a complaint, hey, I just saw some, a bunch of people dressed up and they're walking, this looks like they're going to the SCOP Center, they obviously don't have a sticker. Who'll go there? But as far as the public safety going and running every single light... Who go there? Um, but as far as the public safety going and running every single license plate that doesn't have a sticker on Thursday night at five o'clock, probably not gonna happen. Not saying that we can't do it, but there is, there is this, you know, thing of a common sense where if we run the plate and it comes back to a resident on the thousand block of Waverne, I'm not gonna issue them a ticket. You know what I mean?
And then when people spell EZ Park and they're selling their slots, wouldn't it be EZ or E A S Y? Nobody got my jokes? Who got my joke? Who got my joke? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Creighton. Thank you. Yeah. I'll I'll explain too. She hasn't been a ballgame in a long time. Have it, have it.
For parking in a while.
There you go, there you go. All right, thank you for this. It's a great start. I appreciate this. This is very good. I think our neighbors are very happy. I hear a lot of us here.
I had a lot of direction from the city, city manager on this and collaborated, been talking about this for months, so.
Uh, Mr. Viner?
Okay, this is good. I appreciate the fact you're being proactive. This is a good test case, so it's kind of good data in case this works really well, we can build out from it. Just, we just wanna make sure we kind of conform residents in a couple of different areas of communication if we can, because that's gonna be the biggest hurdle. I'm gonna have to play to make sure.
Well, on that point, Councilmember Viner, Senator Seidman and I have discussed that too. This is a much more complex issue than just this one piece, right? There's a whole mosaic of remedies and solutions to help manage parking and traffic as part of the SCOP, because we want it to be successful. We also want to protect our neighborhoods in the process. So um, I do believe City Manager Seidman, one, you said a communication uh will go out to all of those in the impacted area we talked about. Rather than just addressing the singular singular piece that we uh share insight into the overall strategy of how parking is being addressed um as it relates to the SCOP Center. And I think too, you also said that on opening weekend, which is likely going to be the most intensely used weekend, we would uh have some professional support to be monitoring uh and looking at where how these pilots are functioning and where edits might need to occur. So when you come back to us in ninety days, we can make some informed and intelligent decisions about whether or not um it needs to be changed. And just for the community and those who may be watching tonight, so they understand what um assets are there for parking. There are going to be forty-four spots at Maryland Lot on the the SCOP Center proper, and they actually sits upon the detention area that's helping solve our um our infrastructure concerns. There's also eighty-eight spots at municipal campus. Uh, forty-four spots will eventually be on the Detroit Lot. That'll be specific to staff and performers. And then, of course, there's the on-street parking that we're going to protect for our residents. And then um I believe now residents are using um the municipal lot um overnight, and that will be enforced going forward and to Mr. Colar's point, doing it in a gradual uh just so it's not punitive and um but we make it clear what the intended use is for those sites and and again, do it in a common sense way. Um, so hopefully the community feels confident that this is being addressed, we're being proactive about it and we know and asking for patience as well, because it is going to be a learning process as we go and see how it uh functions in actual reality. I do have another question, Chief, because as I said, there are other pieces to this. What about safe crossing measures and that when crowds are coming and they're either coming from across Jefferson or across Maryland or across any of it, how are we managing that? Is it going to be clear to the pedestrian where they do that safely? Uh, and if not, when are we gonna?
There will be, so there's already a designated crosswalk at Maryland Jefferson. Um, and then from our north lot proper, um, it where Hampton meets, so it'd be the southeast corner of Hampton at the corner of the rectory, there's a natural curb cut that goes to a natural, another natural curb cut to our north lot. We'll have our D P W. designate it, designate that as a as a designated crosswalk as well.
So it seems to me, Council, like in Sunaner, we have a comprehensive plan. Is anybody seeing any deficits or weak points that we want to get on top of now? Or if the community sees any, you know, this is a partnership, right? We're residents too, so uh if any residents have thoughts or concerns about best practices, I know some of them we've already heard and I sense that they're incorporated into this plan that's being proposed. But if there are other things, please let us know, community, how we can be.
They can email thepublicsafety@grospointpark.org. Um, I have a couple of members of my staff that are from out of state who have um experience in neighborhoods with uh residential permit parking, so there'll be a good um resource to use.
Well, thank you again for being on top of this and thorough response. Anything more, Senator Viner?
No, no, I'm good.
All right, well, I think we can call the question then. Eric, if you could please call the roll for the approval of temporary traffic control order number two four four for a period of ninety days relative to Hampton and the one thousand blocks of Waverne, Maryland and Lake Point. Councilmember Coler?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallagher?
Yes.
Councilmember Viner?
Yes.
Councilmember Draper?
Yes.
Yes.
Your high. Yes, motion carries. We have approval of traffic control order number two four four. Thank you very much. Council, we're moving into the next item, which is the eight-yard dumpster contract award. If it's amenable to our city attorney, I would like to propose two motions, one of which will approve the budget amendment for F Y. twenty twenty-five at seventy-five hundred dollars for lines one zero one to four four one for the dumpster and pickup services. And then the next one would be to approve the five-year contract uh with Detroit disposal for a total cost not to exceed thirty-eight thousand eight hundred seventy-seven dollars and twenty cents for the provision of dumpster pickup services. Is that an appropriate approach or would you prefer they all be in one?
I would do one motion. I would do a motion to approve the budget amendment and to award the contract.
Okay, Council, so the motion up for your consideration that we'd be looking for a motion on the second on would be to approve that budget amendment for the current fiscal year and the amount noted as well as the five-year contract. Is there a motion?
So move.
Moved by Viner. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by McMillan. Any uh City Manager Seidman, did you want to um share anything before we uh open it up for discussion?
Yes, absolutely. So thank you very much as members of Council. Uh, you know, as you're reading the summary, uh, we are looking to add three eight-yard dumpsters into the Churchill Business District, so if you uh recall the Tiffa Lot, brand new, which is right behind uh uh Atwater and Park Grill, there is dumpster enclosures, which that was definitely something that we had wanted to address for new developments, having those enclosed. Uh, as well, what we're looking at is, you know, with the improvements of the alleys and beautifying the area, if you were to drive down that alley right now, you see a bunch of the uh single waste hauler uh containers that several businesses are using. And so the city thought that, and D P W. had to profusely thank Tom Jenny for his hard work on this to uh reduce in, you know, any overflow issues or rodent issues, that if we were to be able to, you know, purchase these eight-yard dumpsters, put them in the enclosures and then we will send letters to the businesses that we will be taking those um sixty-two gallon containers. And so as you're driving through the alley, you know, you'll see less of those, so less rodent problems, squirrels, overflowed trash, and we solicited multiple contracts, uh, looked at priority waste, waste management, uh Detroit disposal, which was the lowest price. Um, they also came highly regarded and they've been used in a couple of the other four communities. So uh, we were able to get a two-year lock uh for the first two years at seventy-five hundred dollars with a slight increase afterwards, and it's gonna be a uh a five-year contract. We can always add more if this is successful. And so, you know, again, with Council's approval after tonight, we will uh be considered sending letters out to those businesses, hopefully get the service up in the next couple of weeks.
Questions, Council, comments?
I just have one comment because of the word enclosure is used and there's a a neighbor of ours that always sends me pictures.
Yeah.
Uh, you're right, you're right, he sends them to all, right, uh, when the enclosures are not closed
Yeah.
uh there. So if we could just make sure we emphasize that in the contract and the desire that it be done. Uh, not that I don't enjoy hearing from neighbors, I always do, but um I can make a collage at this point, right?
And that and that should be addressed too, and I'm glad you brought that up because part of the issue we have with priority right now, and I could be mixing that up, so please excuse me, but it's either right now, they're either front or rear loads, but once we go to this, it it switches back, so that should resolve that issue, so.
Listen, if I get yelled at by a wire.
Same thing, we'll, right?
You and I both get yelled at by a wire, we turn the lights off, leave the house, right? So we gotta make sure we yell at our service quiet enough and close the enclosure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Senator Viner, will we be asking the downtown development committee to contribute to the COFs? If it's in that district?
We can talk to the Tiffa about that.
Our Tiffa's meeting. Any other thoughts before we call the question? All right, clear? Councilmember Coler?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallagher?
Yes.
Councilmember Viner?
Yes.
Councilmember Draper?
Yes.
Councilmember McMillan?
Yes.
Your high, please. Yes, motion carries. You now have dumpster service. Please thank you to Tom Jenny and the gap team, um, which brings us to the next item, which is reappointments to the Gross Point Park Planning Commission. We do have two for you to consider tonight. Uh, Council, it would be the approval of the reappointments of Denzel Falcone and Jimmy Saros to three-year terms on the Gross Point Park Planning Commission set to expire in September of twenty twenty-eight. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Moved by McMillan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Viner, just as additional insight, Council, they both agreed to continue their service. This would be Mr. Falcone's first full term. As he was completing a term, you may recall that we first appointed him back in January, so uh and both of them are very qualified. I would uh, I would make the case that we have one of the strongest planning commissions in the state. Uh, and those two are important uh rash reasons for that. And they were certainly effective at navigating a really crucial time, which would be the master plan and zoning ordinance redo and the like. And now certainly the focus is on the implementation and oversight of that. So to that, Council, I would ask that you consider those two appointments. If there's no discussion, we can call the roll.
I'll just say, I don't think people realize how much work the planning commission did, especially in the last, you know, year and a half dealing with the S T Rs. These guys have done a lot of work and I don't think they got enough credit for it, so I'm glad they're staying on.
Right, Mr. Falcone? Councilmember Coler?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallagher?
Yes.
Councilmember Viner?
Yes.
Councilmember Draper?
Yes.
Councilmember McMillan?
Yes.
Your high, please. Yes, motion carries. Thank you to Mr. Saros and Mr. Falcone for their service to the community and to you all here at the table for supporting them. Uh, we now move along in the agenda to our shoreline presentation. Uh, the Matthews E. Patterson Park shoreline rehabilitation. Uh, I invite uh Mr. Creighton and Ms. Knechky to the podium. I don't know if our Beautification Commission liaison, Councilmember Draper or Senator Seidman want to set them up in any way uh or if we should just move right into the presentation. And just for the benefit of those in the audience today, there is no action uh occurring tonight, so we will not get a motion on the table. This is our opportunity to listen and review.
Councilmember Draper, do you want to uh set it up or do you want me to?
Uh, yeah, I'll set this up. I'll say that we've been talking about the shoreline for a long time and they're gonna tell you about it and uh I couldn't be more proud of this commission and the people on it for uh having the gumption to take some initiative and finally get it addressed. This wasn't a mandate. This wasn't anything that came down. This came of the passion of residents in our town that wanted to make something a little bit better. Uh, and in a lot of ways, I didn't even understand how messed up it was. I just see all these things. I mean, I wasn't put on Beautification Commission because I know a tenth of what these two know. Uh, but I've learned a lot from them and I'm really happy that they're here today to talk about it. We've got some other commissioners in the uh, in the crowd as well, because this commission's chock full of knowledge and passion and they're really excited that we're here to talk about this. That works.
Awesome, you are good on your feet.
Thank you.
So before we start, um, we were at the Recreation Commission last Wednesday, and I want to put it on record on City Council. We received tremendous support from Chad's team at Patterson Park and from Beautification Commission and the Gotta Garden and the Garden Club. Um, Chad, Sue, it's just tremendous support. So they come, make sure, do we need anything else? Do we need bags? Use of tools, they pick up the voluminous number of bags that we use. So you know, it just tremendous support, ongoing, you know, every, weeding Wednesday, Saturday, so just want to put it on record. It's truly, truly appreciated. It'd be much harder for us to do things than uh and also Tom Jenny for, you know, D P W. picking up the uh huge bundles of limbs and everything too.
Chip drafts.
Chip drops, chip drop too, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, again, thank you.
Yeah, to that, to you below. Because I don't think a lot of people know this, when the chipper goes around town and it chips up all the, all the trees and everything, they make their way to the big pile of wood chips at Wyomel Point Park and then from there they end up in our parks. When you see all the, all the wood chips everywhere in our parks, it's kind of the circle of life. They're all the limbs that came from everybody's yards and then their final place is the the parks around the trees here. It's pretty.
Yeah, and Councilmember Draper, uh, residents are welcome to come and secure supply of wood chips as well, so. Come use your tax pay, get your taxpayer dollars. Go ahead.
Okay, cool. Thank you. So um selected pictures and actually some of the pictures, you'll see names on them. They're from photographers within our community who've been down at Patterson Park and I'll call you myself and others, and this is Patterson Park. Right? Yeah, it's it's the green space. It's the, it's everything else that's with all the amenities within. But from the boardwalk on out, this is all boardwalk oriented. This is what we want to see. This is what we see. And this is what we want to continue to see at this gem that that really no other community in our area has. So again, you have the packet in your, in your packet, you have three items. You have this presentation. You have a presentation from the C W M A, which we're, which we're not gonna go through in detail. You all have Jesse's notes. And there's an F A Q. in there. So hopefully we answered all the questions before you asked them. We'll see. All right, so we know there's vegetation overgrowth. We know that it's not aesthetically pleasing, because, right? There are a lot of invasive plant species which are listed in um the presentation. Uh, we actually are a contributor to spreading invasive species across the ponds, upriver, downriver. Because we have them, the seeds go everywhere. We also get them from everybody else, but we're also contributing to it. And then the regular maintenance of the shoreline is not occurring, as as we know. So in summary, and then there's a little more details in behind. So we want to rehabilitate the shoreline with herbicide treatment, maintenance and planting. So the Detroit River Western Lake Erie Cooperative Weed Management Area, D R W L E C W, so it's C W M A going forward. They are downriver with the U S Fish and Wildlife Service at the
Detroit River International Wildlife Refuge.
I can never get that right. All right, so they're downriver. And the C W M A, you'll see in the slides, they're responsible for Wayne and Monroe Counties. Right? So we are partnering with them and they're gonna partner with us to work on putting down the herbicide and it is special for, a special formulation for shoreline. So it doesn't harm aquatic.
It's aquatic safe.
Aquatic safe, right? Fish and Wildlife Service will provide the seeds for part of the area. Maintenance, it will be, you know, Patterson Garden Club volunteers, it's Beautification Commission, it's people wanting to be involved in man, help managing that area. And there, there's some process around this. The cost may include training, treatment of plants. There's a cost slide in the back here. We wouldn't start till next fall from a perspective of the treatment, but we'd start in the spring when the weeds start coming up. We'd start there. There's a little bit of process around that. We're not gonna, we're not gonna basically uh nuke the whole area. We have to have foliage for the treatment to take to kill the roots. So it's really around height management. And some of the weeds are very aggressive. If you cut them, they're gonna say, you attacked me. I'm gonna go after this even more and spread the roots and and become even more aggressive, so.
Because there's, yeah, because there's several different types of species and they all need to be targeted at different, you know, different ways. And so like, for example, one of the um ones that I'm sure you're very familiar with is the vine weeds, the hedge. We have both hedge and field vine weed, which is that a vine that wraps itself up and around the railing. That is what he was referring to in terms of, you know, we can't just completely yank it out. We need to have some foliage in order to target it. And with the herbicide treatment, it is very targeted. It does not, you know, once it hits the soil, it's basically inactive, so it is very, you know, we're working with C W A, C W M A professionals for that reason.
Okay, and so our Beautification perspect, Commission perspective would be subcommittee established to lead the effort and then multiple Beautification Commission members will take a shoreline class from M S U Extension. So a little bit more details here. Again, feel free to stop us. You have to wait for questions in the end, okay? So the area we're talking about, again, everyone knows the shoreline. You have the area from the kayak launch back to Grand Marais. That would remain as lawn, right? It's used for caging, staging kayaks and everything. From the kayak down around the bend for like the second bench, that is a wide enough area. Uh, and we know that a couple of years ago, uh, one of the recreation or one of the park staff was using some miscellaneous things and creating artwork. It's that area we're talking about. It's wide enough that we can do a shoreline meadow. But once you pass that all the way over to the uh outlet, that is uh much more difficult to traverse because there's a lot of cement chunks. And so therefore, perennials, we put there low maintenance from that point over.
And the meadow, that would be the, like, where U S Fish and Wildlife would help provide the seed for like a short uh native, you know, perennials and grass.
Yeah, so to to the point of leading up to the treatment, we would trim and keep the weeds low so that there's sight visibility from the boardwalk as well as from the green space, so you can see through. Then the the plants that'll be going in, again, would be intended to keep low, so not these big monster sunflowers, things like that. Again, the intention is to be able to see from the green space out to like So I, the next set of slides are the ones that you have from CWMA, I'm not going to go through them in detail. You have Jess's notes, now, she's, she's on an NGO, but they're impacted by the furlough, all right? So you see her notes of what she would have said if we could have recorded her.
Right.
So it's rather detailed, it's very good. So she explains what the CWMA is, there's 22 clocked areas.
Sismas, yeah.
You know, sismas. Um, you can see the, all the green areas, I'm not sure if you have a color copy, but you can see the green areas all the way down to the high border, and then we would actually be, if we did this, we would actually be the northernmost green area that would, we partner with, all the way up here. But you can see the tremendous number of areas that they had covered, and you can see in the next slide, this is currently who they partner with. Now partnering, there's an MOU, so it's, it's a document that, the only thing it says is, Rose Point Park commits to managing invasive species. That's all it says, right? But that allows us to be put on as a partner on their website, and everyone else can know, and you probably can talk about it, is, hey, you know, people who care about some of this stuff can say, hey, we, we like the fact that Rose Point Park is just doing these things, Arbor Day and all these other things.
This would just be another.
Another thing. So, you know, Jess put down here, the area, these are invasive species, you know, Kelly talked about these. And if we don't do anything in the right-hand column, basically, you know, what happens? If, if nothing happens, we continue to be bad neighbors, the area continues to be overgrown, weed whacking continues, seeds continue going into the seed bank, which is just basically propagates forever the invasive species in the soil.
And some of these can remain viable in the seed bank for 50 to 100 years. So the more seed that's producing, that's just putting us further and further behind.
So they, they talked about two different treatment methods, and I highlighted the one that they recommend, uh, which is glyphosate at a specific formulation.
Very low concentration.
Very low concentration. And it would go down in September, there's a, there's this chart here coming up, it'll get, it'll go down in September. Leading up to that, we would do selective weeding of certain species, and just kind of, keep anything short and leave the foliage. After that, we would do targeted herbicide, where things keep coming back up, we would continue to, to, continue to target those, just that, that daily line, yeah, outside, outside.
So this is a multi-year?
Multi-year. Okay. So they've had, you know, their experiences for public perception on use of herbicides, chemical use along shorelines, right? There'll be plenty of, of notification, plenty of-
Education.
Education. We talked about the seed bank, it's a pretty deep seed bank at this point. A lot of coordination needs to occur here between the city and the CWMA, uh, and contractors who may be doing this. All right, so again, contact information there, which, which, uh, city manager has, if you can get a hold of them at some point. Okay, so swinging back to our portion of the presentation, so we talked about the seed bank just now, so we don't need to cover that again. Weeding and trimming, as we talked about, some are very aggressive, so if you cut them, they're going to just come back even stronger. Um, and I mentioned targeted weeding, it's about the year as well as after, let's say we're talking 2027, continue to target the weeding and continue to target the herbicide. So cost, so the installation cost, if the CWMA gets the Eagle Grant next year, okay, the TIFI, right, then they would possibly be able to deploy their treatment. Right now, up to, up to the furlough, they were doing the treatment in all these different areas, they do it in the fall. So if they get the Eagle Grant, then they can deploy it. If not, and we have to go out to our contractor, we being the city, go out to a contractor, they have to be certified for shoreline treatment, right? The quotes came back, you know, basically between 2K and 6K, 6K is very, very high-end, very high-end, but that's the range of, if the city had to contract it, that would be the range for the treatment. Seeds, Fish and Wildlife Service will provide the seeds. Plants, um, for the perennials, you know, $500,000 for the perennials, and then basically all the labor is, because it's all volunteer, right? Now, we talked to, you know, Chad said he wants the, his team to be involved where possible, which is cool. So as we do work, they would be involved, they would learn, they would do work with us alongside. Maintenance-wise, again, labor-wise, all in kind to maintain it, um, going the opposite way as done. Plants, we may need to replace plants and augment it periodically, so there's a small budget there. Seeds, if some seeds didn't take, we may need to go and purchase more seeds. And then spot treatment for herbicide, if, if, uh, we don't have a certified person, we have to get our contractor, but we're fairly certain that's not going to be needed.
You specify the installation, so, because you said it's multi-year cycles, is this perennial or a one-off?
Installation, the, the maintenance portion could be perennial, but once it gets established, then the cost will drop.
Because the herbicide treatment, it's one big treatment, but-
One big treatment, and the, the spots are-
The spots are, yeah.
The spots are, yeah. So timeline, um, again, we do targeted weeding, March of September, all the way from the moment those weeds both are little, are green things out of the ground, to the time we do the herbicide, we'd just be doing targeted weeding and targeted cutting, okay, by a plan, not arbitrary. Resident communication is very important, both at the park as well as maybe, you know, park scene, website, social media, et cetera. Site prep, herbicide in September, and seeding in late September, October, and planting at the same time. And then 2027, targeted weeding, maintaining, making sure everything's okay. The native plants going in would all basically not require watering, except maybe initial irrigation.
Initial, yeah, usually it takes about a few years, you know, before they develop those big long roots where you don't have to water them, it's often.
It's weird how that sounds, we're along the lake, but.
Yeah.
All right. So, um, basically, next steps is, you're in agreement with city administration, you know, you know, which, uh, city manager can talk to, um, assign the partnership agreement, which is not mandatory to go forward with this. Um, establish the beautification subcommittee, which then volunteers, beautification, you know, commissioners will join. Uh, Garden Club has a scope of work, you know, that's assigned with the beautification commission in the city, that would have to be amended, and then planning communications, and then start. All right, so, as I mentioned, we were, we were at the Recreation Commission for another project, which, you know, Brent talked about, which was a meadow. While these are separate, there is some, there is some joining from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service in the agreement for Fish and Wildlife Service, right? So this is, uh, a, you know, from a Recreation Commission, they have to come and recommend the meadow going forward. If not, then the Fish and Wildlife Service would, would only have a very small piece, again, still be in agreement, but still have a small piece just for the, just for sure. Questions?
Questions?
I mean, it's not a question, I want to first off commend you for all the effort and the work you put in through this. I'm always taken aback with how much, like, tremendous residential engagement there is with projects, and so, who knows, you guys have given a lot of work on this. I'm looking forward to kind of proceeding down this path, but nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Viner.
So I'd like to also say thank you, it's a really nice job. The only question that I have is, um, so we, I, I understand the process and it makes a lot of sense, but one of the first things that you said was that, you know, the, the species are invasive along the shoreline and, and sometimes moving, moving in that way. So once we have the new plantings in, and all the perennials are in, and everything's well seeded in, say, three years from now, it, yeah, how do you keep those invasive species from coming back in, right?
Well, it's like, it's kind of a constant monitoring thing.
Right.
Um, because who's to say we won't get some things floating in, right? But, um, if we, you know, since we'll be involved in this project and keeping an eye on monitoring it, then we can get a better grasp, because right now it's been multiple, this has just been building up for multiple years, right? So it's much more challenging than, you know, all of a sudden we notice, oh, purple loose stripe, okay, well, we can just pop that out, you know? Some of them can actually be pulled, but different ones, like, for example, the fragmities, which are those really tall, um, float, if you drive along freeway, you see them along freeway as well, um, tall grasses, those are much more challenging and need like a targeted treatment and take a few years to tackle.
It's an aggressive kind of bird.
Yeah.
I know I just do it in my yard, and there's always those weeds that are coming back, and sure, never ending thing.
Yeah.
Just think it's just very difficult to do along the shoreline, so it sounds like you have a really good plan there, and, uh, it's nice work, so.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you both, all of you as well. Councilmember Viner, you said it well, we have such talent, you guys are in competition for the planning commission, you know? Um, so thank you for all that, and I think this is the first step, creating awareness, right? And in terms of going forward, I think it would be helpful, and, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, counsel, but to have a sense from the beautification commission and consensus on what the priorities should be, because there's, there are myriad ones, right? So, and that staff be actively part of that, so that there's clear focus, that's in alignment with the Capitolon Purban Plan, Parks Master Plan, uh, with, uh, existing staff and resources, uh, so that, again, we can, we can accomplish something and have impact because we've got leadership and all the pieces are fitting together, and then an ongoing sustainability plan. Because if you can't fund it, uh, then you, you, you lose everything that you already invested, so. Uh, and that can't be just volunteers either, there have to be safeguards in place, because you all are amazing, right? What happens 10 years from now, or five years from now? So I think those are the things that this body is going to want to see, is it makes decisions going forwards. That kind of leadership, um, coming from the beautification commission and coming from the staff team, does that make sense, uh, counsel? So, all right, well, thank you again, and know we're here to help and support and cheerlead, and if you need help initiating those conversations and that, I know all of us are here to do that, and you've got great, great talent and skill with, uh, Councilmember Draper, uh, serving as your liaison.
Can I make one more comment?
Sure.
So, um, if I can drag this over here, so we go into, one thing that you said, if I can grab this, is one of the concerns was, um, I can't drag it over, one of the concerns was that, um, you guys just talked about resources, right? It's going to duplicate this. Um, this wasn't in the back of my head, and I thought about it after Recreation Commission, Commission meeting, there, you know, you know, Chad made a comment about concern about resources, right? And so we had talked about it before, Mr. We brought it up in there again, and from a volunteer perspective, it's not a heavy lift, because when you take a look at the various beautification events, you know, at the, at Patterson Park, you take a look at the Patterson Park Garden Club, and basically, because it started middle of the year, it was a tremendous amount of work to take care of the gardens that were overgrown, but now there's plans in place and activities in place, so starting in 2026, the work is going to be much less, all right? So then we have weeding Wednesdays, which are just two hours. So the shoreline rehabilitation, you know, target weeding, weeding Thursdays or whatever, again, short period of time to get in front of it, basically, when, when it starts. And then if, if the trails of meadow goes through, it's really the same thing, so from a perspective of volunteers, it's not a heavy lift, right? And from a garden club perspective, it is a formal garden club, it's Michigan Garden Clubs, it's got officers. And so if someone moves away, steps down, there is a structure in place that it continues on. So it's not, we're trying to structure this, so it's not based upon two people, okay? As a beautification commission, it has the subcommittee, right, and it has the garden club and other volunteers. So from that perspective, it is sustainable, it is ongoing. And then if, let's say, it stops, it really falls back to the city, and what the city would do anyway, from a, from a shoreline perspective, it's still in the city's warehouse, regardless. It's still the city's warehouse, so, so it's not like you're losing anything, the city should already be doing this for the shoreline.
I have a question for you, how do you, um, kind of advertise or try to improve your beautification? Because I, coincidentally, I was having a conversation with a new resident, was asking specifically about, oh, you know, how do I get engaged in weeding and that sort of thing? And obviously, the city can help, you know, help facilitate that communication, because I think there's a lot of people who, when they see what you do, um, if they, you know, if we can point it out there a little bit.
We've been working on that, um, so we do have a Facebook group for Patterson Park, I know not everyone's on Facebook, um, but we also have put out, um, like, sign-ups at City Hall, like, signup lists, um, just trying to spread the word. We were just at the Joiner Fair at the War Memorial, um, a couple of weeks ago, which was a, a night where there were a bunch of clubs that people could come and learn about, you know, different organizations you can get involved with in the area. Um, we were also set up at after six for the first time this year, so we met quite a few people through that, and yeah, we're, we're hoping through word of mouth and through all of those avenues, um, we'll continue growing, but we're open to suggestions as well. How can we reach those people?
On the city website?
Yeah.
So there's resourcing the city website, um, and I talked to just about everyone who goes to Patterson Park, if they're walking, and if I can nail them, I, I beeline toward them and stop them and get their input. I've gotten some good input on some things that allowed us to make some adjustments.
That's how I imagine.
Yeah, I, yeah, that's how, get a butterfly.
But we also have, like, we just, we got business cards made, so we can hand those out to people, and yeah. We're trying to explore all different avenues, because that is challenging to find out, where do people get their information, right? I think it varies.
Do you want to introduce the supporters that are in the room now, like, garden club members and beautification members?
Yeah.
Just so you know.
So we have Commissioner Carol Bowles here, she's actually our vice chair of the commission. She's been very supportive from day one about all the pollinator gardens. And then we have Lindsay Sutter, who is, uh, she was instrumental in helping and design and implement and propose the, um, children's garden, uh, the new children's garden, so we worked together on that, and she's also one of our just amazing volunteers that comes, and she's part of Garden Club as well. Um, and then we have Lindsay and her husband here, Steve, Lindsay Nguyen and Stephen Nguyen, and, uh, Lindsay is, oh my gosh. I couldn't do half of what I do without her.
Also, you got an email from Lindsay, just you're putting two and two together.
She-
Her story is amazing.
So she, she volunteered for every project, she's there every day. I say, I text, hey, you know, oh yeah, I'm there, I'm there, what do you need, you know? And she also helped install the, um, the paver, she donated and installed the paver pathway in the median there, um, the butterfly garden there, so. Um, she's amazing, and her husband's amazingly supportive and comes and helps out on the volunteer days as well. Thank you all for being here, for being part of it.
Into the back.
And, oh, no?
Nope, okay.
Yes, I'm not-
Patrick, oh, Patrick here.
He's right in front of my face.
No, I don't want to, no.
No, no, Patrick also is ama, has been amazingly supportive and, uh, comes to all the workdays and is, uh, one of our biggest cheerleaders and is-
I can't hold the candles either, but thank you.
No.
I will add to the idea that, you know, it's available for any communication link you have had, but I will attest, Jim is also going to walk dogs. Do you need whatever?
Andy, it's-
I can walk the dogs.
I typically walk, you're, you're my walk time right now, I typically walk at night towards the lake, and so sometimes I'll call Patrick, hey, I'm on a walk.
So, and perhaps the city manager, Seis, who came to the last, uh-
Yeah.
Patterson Park Volunteer Day.
Tree church.
I saw DeWalt Paul Saw and went to town falling down dead branches.
It was a lot.
It, it was over, he was just still over there, because he, I said, next time you go home, you got kids. But you just really got in, uh, really got in the groove there, Patterson Park.
Thank you to Max and Brent and Martin for coming to the volunteer, uh, workdays as well, really appreciate your support.
And I do announce the volunteer workdays here, we have them coming up, uh, but we got to make sure that we get those on the city calendar as well. I know we've been trying to institutionalize that calendar and get more things on there, so, um, I'll try to do a better job of making sure, because. I'll say it, I'll say it, and in the past, we weren't out.
And I, I communicate.
They're on there, yeah.
Okay, great.
Thank you, thank you so much, guys, thank you so much. I see, counsel, that, uh, should have noticed this sooner, but usually counsel comment comes after public comment?
Yes, yes, it does.
So if, if there's no disagreement, can we put public comment before counsel comment? Please, we don't need a motion.
Yeah.
All right, so with that, uh, fellow, um, residents who are here, we're going to go into our second hearing of the public, and as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, this is for, actually for anything now, you can speak to items that were on the agenda as well as off the agenda. We have three minutes, please to share your name and your street, and I'll see, we have, uh, someone here, we'll open that hearing, and you're more than welcome to come, or if you're more comfortable, uh, from there, you're fine as well, sir.
I'm David Trant, who, from 1032 Bishop Road. I'm over a 60-year resident of the park and a frequent user of Patterson Park. I have heard through rumors that there's not going to be any ice skating this year. There's no water in the pool at this time. There's no water in the pool at this time. Aesthetically, it's unattractive. I use the, I walk in the park four to five times a week. And I agree with these guys about the waterfront. But in the wintertime, the ice skating rink is of a lot of use as far as I can see, both adults and children. And on Saturdays and Sundays, when I walk in the park, there are families there. Is it true that you're not going to have ice skating?
Mr. Trantu, because this is public comment, we can't get into dialogue, but I will say if you can hang a little bit, I'm sure one of us will answer that question and, and council comment. So the next.
I'm sorry, I have my, I have my hearing aids turned up.
Go ahead. You can go ahead and answer it. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Um, do you want to answer that question? Just to make sure it's complete and I don't miss anything.
Yeah. So the refrigeration system is turned off for this year. However, there will be ice skating available, you know, weather dependent way. So we will be freezing the ice.
So the rink will function, uh, in cold weather. We just won't have the chillers operating. So if it's not below freezing, then the, the rink won't be usable.
But, uh, so are you going to put water back in it recently? Now?
Uh, I can't answer that right now whether or not, but you know, during the wintertime, we would put water in it for then it to freeze.
Okay. It's, it's really quite unsightly, but recently.
Okay. I could be trying to clean it up right now for the fall season, but.
I can answer that part of the meeting last week, just for this particular meeting.
Please.
The right time.
Go ahead.
Uh, not to speed behind him. I, um, so from the recreation commission meeting last week, they, uh, noticed a small leak in the pond. So that's where the water went. And they're sealing that before they add the water back to freeze it for the ice rink.
Okay.
Just, I just wanted to make sure we addressed that.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
And thank you for coming, Mr. Trantu. I think that's very good input. Anybody else who would like to be heard this evening? Yes, welcome. Nice to see you.
My name is Chuck Davis. I live on Beacon Field where they're doing the Water Main Project. I just want to let you know the company did a real great job. Everything looks good. They're putting in the grass now. They done the sidewalks and all that. So they did a real good job. I do think that the next Water Main Project you guys do, the city needs to do a little bit better job. Because they told a lot of people, just on my street, that you got copper pipe. You don't have to mess with it. And even including my mother and father-in-law. Well, I didn't think that was right. So I did ask one of the guys, one of the workers, a supervisor, and he went and looked and he said, yeah, you got lead pipe. But I was told by Tom Jennings that you don't have to do nothing. But luckily he went through, checked all the ones that the city said had copper. Nine out of 10 had lead. So they went ahead and repaired everything. So I got to give them credit for that. But also afterwards, my mother and father-in-law received this water bill for $16,772. They're, they're 90 years old. Are you guys trying to give them a heart attack or what? But we went up to the city and they says it happens. How does this happen? Even my water bill was more than they said it was going to be. So how is a residence of Growth Point Park going to believe the city billing when we see, receive bills like this? So that's something to check into. And even my bill was more than what the city said it was going to be. So mine went up $130 and it's not 23 or 24%. Also, on my street, there's a guy that owns a five houses rental property. It took me two summers of complaining to have him fix a roof on his garage. By the time they got it fixed, he had holes like this in the, in the roof. But it took me two summers of complaining to the code department. He's got another house that I call every three to four weeks. Because he got grass that's a foot tall. The city called and he comes out with a weed whacker. Three, four weeks later, I do the same thing. He's got another house that's got weeds growing out of his gutters, a foot and a half high all summer. Where's the code department? They don't seem to be doing nothing about it. He's got another one. I talked to a resident, a renter. He said he come up here to get a park pass. He said they told him that there's too many violations against the house, that he can't get a park pass. So how did he get, uh, how did he get information to where he could rent this house out? Who inspected the house? So I'm just letting you know. And he's got other houses. I'm not, I don't have time to complain about, but I always call the code department and it just seems like it's on deaf ears.
Can we get a photograph of that?
Yeah.
Please.
You need to?
Yeah. I mean, I'm sure you want to keep your.
But I just want to hold on to it. She was actually going to call one of the news, uh, you know, channel four or channel seven.
Yeah, that would be weird.
Well, she didn't, she's a long-term Growth Point Park resident for a long time.
Send us the photo. May I see?
Yeah, sure.
All right. Um, thank you so much, Mr. Davis.
I appreciate it.
Your contact information that you can leave us. That would be great.
Yeah.
Is there anybody else who'd like to be heard tonight? Uh, Mr. Nguyen.
Mr. Nguyen over on Patterson Road. This is a small thing, but since I'm here, I might as well tell you. Um, I'm Jefferson at like Trombley where the school crossing is. Do you guys know what I'm talking about? No worries.
Want to make sure you have our full attention.
Yeah, you're, you're good. Uh, it's like on Jefferson by where the school crossing is to, uh, like Trombley Road, I think there. There's a sign that says, um, the school hours, like when the speed limit is 25 versus 35. That sign, I've noticed like for years, when my, when my daughter was in school there, doesn't account for late start on Monday. So the time slot ends on Mondays, like when all, like 15 minutes before all the kids cross the road. So it's just sort of a thing to flag.
That's a cool, a pretty detail. Yes. That's a really good, uh.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Well, I've been here.
I look forward to next month hearing about how we got that sign updated.
Yes.
I'm on Alis Bajie on 1221 three mile. And I got a very high water bill too, but not as high as that one. Um, I always get good response from your water department when I have a question. And I found, find the water bill very difficult to understand. And I made a remark, it looks like the water consumption is the same as the sewer. And I said to Kristen, how can the sewer be the same as the, as, as the incoming water? When most of it really goes to watering my lawn? So there should be a difference between, and it gets absorbed by the grass and by the trees. So the sewer portion of it should be less because of that. So the first thing, and she said, we don't have a means to differentiate between the two. So in other words, I'm getting charged the same for sewer as my water consumption, even though I personally don't consume it. It goes to the environment. The first thing people are going to do is going to say, I'm sure I'm not the only one. I never had to build this high $377. So keep, the first thing people are going to do is say, I'm going to cut down on my sprinkling on the environment. So that means in the future, chances are lawns are going to be brown. And the trees will not get the water. And they will become weak, including the ones on city property. So over a period of years, if people don't water enough, you will have to cut down more trees. So I'm concerned, is there a way to differentiate and give people a credit for the portion of the water that goes towards watering? It does not become part of the sewer?
Again, we can't, I, I think some of my colleagues, the city manager might be able to answer that question.
I have not been here before, so I don't know if this has been discussed before.
It has, but we can, it's discussed again during council comment. So if you can just wait till the next item in the agenda, uh, we can get you an answer. Let me just explain really quick.
Tell me.
I'm just going to explain really quick as a city attorney.
Yeah.
Practically, this panel here, the council, they're prohibited from having a back and forth with members of the public. So they can't answer your question.
That's okay.
But they will as soon as council, as soon as public comment is done. You will get an answer. It just won't be yet.
I usually get an answer by phone when I have a question and they call back right away, leave me a message. And I also.
Tonight.
And I, and I also think as your public works, I get very good response to with a sidewalk replacement.
I think about the video. Thank you for coming tonight. Is there anybody else who would like to be heard? Yes, please. Let's hope. See if we've got that there.
Hi, Council.
Hello.
Uh, I'm, uh, Bernie Cottigan. And I reside at 702 Trombley. And, uh, I have a grave issue here to discuss with you. I was ticketed in April of 2024 for disorderly dog walking. And I've been fighting that ticket, uh, vigorously with an attorney. To the point that we actually went to trial in November of 2024. There were some, uh, extenuating issues in that case. So I lost it. It was a jury trial here with Judge Jarboe. So I immediately did the American way, which is to appeal. So I hired another attorney, since the original attorney didn't do such a great job, uh, which cost me $2,600. I had the receipts here. He's waiting for the trial testimony. In February of 2025, I have receipt here where I did what we've all been told, because I've been a resident here for over five years in the city. Dog walking for four of those years. So in November, I'm sorry, in February of 2025, I gave the $25 deposit for this trial testimony so that the appeal could start the process because the punishment was only probation. I have a clean record. But since I felt I wasn't guilty of anything other than walking a dog on a leash or two dogs on a leash, where other people had dogs off a leash. And I couldn't bring any witnesses on my side of the case. Anyway, I've been coming in since February of 2025 into the courtroom counter here and dealing with one of these three ladies. Uh, and asking where's the trial testimony? They don't know. This is from February. So I go in March. Whereas the, they call the girl, she doesn't respond on the phone, the court reporter. Uh, Tanja Williams is her name. She was the one that did the trial with, for Judge Jarboe with me. Which had only lasted an hour on a Friday. It was November 22 of 2024. Uh, but they had like three hours of deliberations. So since February, I've come in and given them $20, $20, asked them, how much is it? How much is it? They don't know. Tanja doesn't pick up on her phone. They won't be responsible for her. So they allowed me to, uh.
Mr. Cottigan, your three minutes is up. So maybe city manager Sid, could you share your contact? So that.
Can I wrap it up?
You can follow up.
Can I wrap it up, Rick?
Second. Sure.
Okay. So I've been trying since February, I've given them $185. Now they refuse to take any more money at the counter, saying that I've overpaid. Tanja Williams has refused to give me the testimony. I need this to move forward with the appeal. So I turned this over to the Michigan State Police last week because I got an extortion call from another lady who worked with her. Claiming that I needed to pay an additional $800.
I'm so sorry. I have to interrupt you. Because we have special council rules, we can only let you have three minutes. We can't move anymore. But we are going to have a court call you. We're, we have heard your concerns. I wrote down all of your facts. I will check into this personally, but we will also have the court call you. I'll talk to you then.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Anybody else? All right. We will close the final public comment portion of the meeting this evening and move into council comments. Council. So anybody who would like to be, uh, yes, go ahead, Mr. Viner.
Sure. So, uh, first and foremost, the infrastructure committee had a meeting earlier this month. It was recorded. It's posted on the city website, uh, on the, rather the city YouTube channel. The link to it's also in my infrastructure report. Um, the residents had some questions about water, sewer. I'd be happy to talk to you after the meeting. But the infrastructure meeting did address a lot of what we're talking about. I also put out, the city put out, and I put out an FAQ regarding the water bills. It's on the city website. Very briefly to your question regarding the sewer charge and the water charge. Uh, historically, residents have always been paying a supercharge. It's just that the old bills didn't reflect it properly. Because the billing that we get from Great Lakes Water, the utility, they charge us for water, they charge us for sewer. But the old water bills did not differentiate that properly. So now it's actually reflecting where your water sewer dollars are going. But they were always paying sewer before. In addition to that, I want to mention, uh, leaf pickup has officially started this week. Uh, so that'll be going on. Um, yard waste pickup continues until November 17th. Um, I also want to make a comment, uh, I want to commend the department heads for their, they've been putting forward, if you look at the consent agenda, um, each department head has been putting out a report, very useful for both council and residents, really transparent in terms of what's been going on. Um, I want to compliment, uh, council member Kohler for his excellent fashion sense. That lovely bow tie he's wearing, uh, belongs to my son. Made a friendly wager on the Lions Bears game. And fortunately for him, his Bears show that they don't really have any backbone. In fact, they're clearly too, uh, weak and unworthy to get the NFC North title. But anyway, so now, uh, one last thing. Um, beyond everything else, I want to take a moment to, uh, thank all of my colleagues, um, and also, uh, the administration. Uh, you know, regardless of what happens in November, I've really enjoyed being part of this team, including the people who were on council before as well. Uh, it's been really satisfying. I think we've done a lot of good work. So I want to thank all of you. And of course, I want to thank the residents for having given me the opportunity to serve for the last four years. So thank you all very much.
Mr. Viner?
I'll keep this very brief. Um, I talked to some folks in public works as well, and, uh, they wanted me to let people know, anybody that I talked to, that when we're doing a leaf pickup, that pumpkins and sticks, don't put them in the leaves. Uh, I've been guilty in the past of putting pumpkins in the lea- I just think it's, that machine is a panacea of sucking things out of existence. It's not. Pumpkins and sticks, not good for the leaf machine. So, um, if you see your neighbors doing that, please tell them no pumpkins and sticks. Um, and then also beautification, what we're working on right now, you know, the, the volunteer stuff, a lot of that's dying down. Uh, but we have the, uh, awards, the beautification awards, and that ceremony will be November 13th, 7:00 PM, Tompkins Center. Um, we're really excited for some of those awards. We're putting together, wrapping up descriptions and everything else and, um, curating all those awards. And hopefully this year, for the first time ever, we're going to try to get some of those, uh, the photos of the winning houses and everything up on our website. So we continue to celebrate. We've got some amazing commissioners that are, um, spearheading the, the process and making stuff like that happen. So looking forward to our continued development, um, with that. And, uh, also the joiner fair, we heard a little bit about that. Um, the community engagement, we showed up there, uh, with city manager. And we got to learn, uh, and talk a lot about why joining and being part of community is really important. Um, why it's good for our health, why it's good for democracy. And, uh, you know, we got to participate that in a little bit. And it really got me thinking more and more about how important it is not just for, you know, in my own life to show up and do this, but to encourage everybody else, you know? Um, I, there was a time when I was really upset about certain things that were happening in the city. And I came up and I spoke passionately and calmly to, uh, many of these folks on council. And then find myself sitting over here. And I just want to encourage everybody else that, you know, if you ever want to be a part of it. And then find myself sitting over here, and I just want to encourage everybody else that, you know, if you ever want to be a part of it, um, reach out to me, you know, reach out, Brent Driever, I'm, I'm out there, I'm on the city website. You can reach out if you, if you want to get involved in commissions or make a city council run, like some of these people sitting in the audience right now are doing. Um, I'm always happy to talk to you because I think it's really important for our community and for democracy as a whole. All politics is local. So.
All right, Steve Driever.
Yeah, those are great points. I, I agree with everything you guys said, like.
They're agreeing that he was so calm.
He was so calm. Yes, I have three little, little tidbits here. Very proud of Public Safety. We've gone through that. Can't say enough. Very, very proud of that. Um, the reports I want to mention as well, the city clerk, I, I encourage every resident to go on there and take a look at that because it gives a report from the city clerk, Public Safety, Public Works, and of course, you know, uh, our city manager as well. But, uh, they also had noted that if you're a park resident, we'd like to have a smoke detector. You can get one. So all you need to do is call Public, uh, Public Safety and say you'd like to have a smoke detector. And they'll give you one. They'll even help you or assist to tell you where to put it. And maybe in a garage is a good spot too, because that's where you have gas. And then thirdly, I think having this temporary traffic, uh, regulation is awesome because it gives us a good starting point. Now, we're going to take a look at this and see how it works. So I'm behind that a hundred percent. What happened, we put it on, so. That's it. Three real quick points. Time it faster than these two guys, so.
Nice job.
Who's the challenge goes, who's the challenge?
First time for everything, right?
Tim said, time to think. I'm a little worried.
No, I, my, my only quick, um, uh, and I appreciate with council member, uh, Viner saying, I love my bears. Uh, and about, uh, you know, his service, I'm sure councilman Gallardo would say the same, and council mayor Proton Caulfield should say as well. Um, I know that there are a couple of them are up for reelection there, and I appreciate them putting their names. I appreciate the work that everybody does. This is an un- I think it was jobs sometimes, right? And we don't do it for thanks appreciation. We all do it just because of why you're all here, because we all care about our community. Uh, and I think council member Driever said the best, we're all your neighbors. We're all approachable. Uh, yeah, my name's Tim, not council member Kohler. My name's Tim, so. You can see me, you can see all of us around the community there. I just, I love engaging conversations. Um, we all, what's best for our community, and it's been exhibited here in the time I've served here in the last few years in council. I appreciate my colleagues. I appreciate my community members, my neighbors as well. Uh, on that note, I have only one thing to, uh, December third. Um, uh, our local Girl Scouts, uh, reached out to me, uh, my, my youngest is part of that. Uh, and they wanted to earn a, wanted their badges by coming and visiting city hall. So we reached out to city manager and the city clerk. Um, they responded immediately, first time they've ever done that. I don't know why. Uh, I get it, the Girl Scouts, but I appreciate that. Um, so I'm excited. I know my daughter and her scouts are excited to come here on December third. I know city manager and the city clerk, I've been working with Kelly Wagner and others, uh, from the troop to have a wonderful experience for the girls in our community here on December third.
I didn't see Tim in the lockup.
So I, uh, is, uh, will not be here, uh, there, and I have actually a basketball game in southern Indiana that night there, so. Uh, you can watch me on TV, uh, but you can't watch me here, uh, at city council, uh, on that night, so. Uh, but my daughter will be here, my wife will be there, they'll all be there. And I know that, uh, our city clerk, White Weight Activities, uh, that my daughter can sit in my chair should be very excited about that for us, so. Thank you all in advance for your planning and efforts there.
Is Kelly here, anything?
Uh, yes, uh, I just wanted to, today is my last meeting, and I'm so excited about that. I swear. I loved being up here. It was an amazing learning experience. I am grateful to all those who supported me, uh, and my run for council. Um, I'm grateful for my colleagues here. Uh, it was a tremendous learning experience for me. Um, I am a lover of learning. Uh, I always look to put myself in positions where, uh, it's new and I'm challenged and growing. Uh, I have a mentor who said to me once, stay green and grow. Uh, and so I always look to put myself in a position where I'm growing, and I have grown and learned a lot here. Um, I have lots of projects that I put on the side. Um, while my children were in high school and, uh, in the last four years, uh, I just put my eighteen year old son, uh, in college as a freshman, he got a football scholarship to Wayne State, so he's playing there. My daughter's a junior. And I finally have some time back to myself, uh, and I'm excited about the projects that I have in front of me. Uh, and I'm grateful for the opportunity, uh, that I had here. So thank you so much, uh, to everyone, uh, in the community. Um, and then a couple of things that I wanted to talk about, um, uh, regarding some of the comments here. Uh, we've heard from the, the board here, from our mayor, uh, I, I think four times tonight, that, that we actually are not allowed to, to respond back to you. And, um, council, I'm councillor, I'm so excited to see you back and congratulations on being a baby. And I don't want to put you on the spot, but I thought maybe you could actually read that rule to us. The Roberts Rule that says we're not allowed to speak with the.
It's in the council bylaws. So if you could read that, maybe that would be great.
I can see if I can have a clear understanding where it says, we're not allowed to communicate back and forth.
It's best practices. It's my, it's always my recommendation, but I believe it's in your council bylaws. The reason for it is because we want to make sure that every single person, every single member of the public is getting the exact same experience. That's why we have a three minute timer. We don't give one person more time than another person, and we don't want to exhibit any bias by responding to one person versus another. Obviously, tonight, we chose to bend the rules a little bit because there was a special circumstance, but it is always my recommendation. And like I said, I believe it's in your council bylaws. I will look right now, but it is always my recommendation for any council or any board that I.
I, I, I just, I just heard three or four times, we are not allowed to answer and respond. And I have Roberts Rules right here. I couldn't find it anywhere in Roberts Rules. So I think the mayor recommended, mentioned those, um, uh, as in Roberts Rules, but I couldn't find them there. And so I would just, I think it'd be great for the community to clearly understand what the rule is. And I, I couldn't find one that said we're not allowed to. It could be, we, it said in the bylaws that I remember reading was, it's not recommended to get into an argument back and forth, is what it said. I have not read a rule that said we are not allowed to respond. But if you could read that for the community, and while you're doing that, I wanted to, um, address. I, I forgot your first name, but you, yes, what's your? No, I'm sorry.
Oh, listen, I just wanted you to stop thinking about this because a lot of people are watering.
Yes, and, and I'm so excited to hear you. I'm so excited to hear you, you say that, uh, because and we had council member Viner says we've always been charged for the sewer. It was written in there definitely. Yes, we were. But the difference was that previously we were charged a flat rate. And I agree with you. I am with you in that I will not be watering my lawn in the same way that I did before. My pool, I've gotten the largest water bill that I've ever had. I was the only councilperson who voted no for it for raising the rates twenty three percent, even though our city manager only asked us for eighteen. Councilmember Viner and others recommended moving it up to twenty three percent as opposed to what was recommended by our, uh, city manager. Now, what I will say is, I also recommended that we charge a flat rate for our sewer, which would give us the opportunity to have more control. Because what we do consume doesn't necessarily go into the sewer. So now we're being charged, whatever you're consuming, you're being charged now on the, on the, uh, for water, you're being charged on sewer. We were charged for sewer before, but it was a flat rate. And my recommendation was to move it back to a flat rate so we don't run into the problem like you or like myself, that I'm not watering my lawn in the same way. And I stopped, I usually keep my pool open till October or, or, uh, end of October, beginning of November, but I'm, I'm not having it open that much anymore because I don't want to have to continue to pay twenty three percent more for water and twenty three percent more for sewer when it's not obviously going into the sewers. I think there's room in there to be.
And wait, oh, Mike, and wait, I'm sorry.
I apologize. We can't have a back and forth.
Hello, but.
The time for public comment is over. I'm so sorry. I really, I hate to do this, but we have to keep the meeting in order. We can have a discussion at the end.
We're almost done. We can talk after the adjournment. So that, that, that was my, that was my, um, that was my recommendation. So I acknowledge you and what you're saying, and I agree with you one hundred percent. And I'm one voice, but I have a voice that joins with yours, so now we're two. So maybe there's others, and maybe we'll make some headway and try to find a flat rate, which makes it more acceptable for people and their water bill. And like the ninety year olds who are, who are on a, a limited budget, a twenty three percent increase means choosing sometimes between maybe their medications and paying for water or maybe their food. Uh, and, and, and it's true. Uh, and I think that having the consideration for those is, is a really important factor in this environment. And one of the other things that I wanted to bring up as well is, you know, as I was, as I was thinking about, this was my last uh, meeting, I, I was looking, cleaning out my office, cleaning out all the paperwork and things, and I came across this folder, and this folder right here is, is specifically is for the millage, the millage that was passed for the water sewer. And you can see the park votes were two and a half millage. This was, these newspaper articles that I pulled through from my millage folder are from twenty twenty two. Okay, so that's twenty twenty two, that's three years ago. Uh, and in that newspaper, we put together capital improve, in the, in the newspaper article, we put together a capital improvement plan, and that capital improvement plan, you know, has all the things listed in here, what it is. Here's our city infrastructure, et cetera. So I started just like reading through and going, oh, yeah, I remember when we passed that two minute, two, that millage, two point five millage to collect two million dollars a year extra. Um, and I, I just want to read a quote out of the paper here, um, from council member Viner. We need to start work on this immediately. Our infrastructure is fundamentally at the end of life. Most of our system is nearly a hundred years old. He went on further to say in another article about the rates, he said, quote, "We're still effectively going to have a millage because the residents are going to pay it on their property tax or their water bill." So that was his, those were his comments to push for a millage, which he was successful in doing. I voted no on the millage, by the way. That's my personal position there. That was in twenty twenty two. We're either going to have a millage or we're going to have to raise our rates. Or in twenty twenty five, we have a two and a half percent millage, and we also have a twenty three percent increase in our water rates. So my advice to the residents here is to just pay attention. There's a lot of money going into that water and sewer fund on claims that we're a hundred years old and nearly at the end of life for our entire system. But the council member Viner has forgotten that in two thousand and one, twenty nine point five miles of storm water, so of storm water infrastructure was put into our community. It was twenty three million dollars worth of infrastructure put in our community that was not a hundred years ago. So when you hear these words of fear mongering to raise money about our infrastructure is at end of life, it's a hundred years old, it's not true. It's just not. And when you hear someone say, because we have infrastructure that was just put in in twenty, two thousand and one. And when you hear, when you hear someone say, you either have to have a millage or you're going to have to raise your rates, because we have to fix everything. We had a millage at two, two million dollars a year. Now we got a twenty three percent. And that, that money, that money of twenty three percent that we're collecting is being argued, it's to cover ten percent, ten percent of a raise for rates. Now, that ten percent for a raise for rates is a ten percent that we're paying our suppliers, ten percent more of our costs. Ten percent of cost is not the same thing as the amount of revenue that we're raising from our residents. We're collecting twenty three percent from every resident. Our supplier is only increasing our cost ten percent. So it's something for this community to really keep in mind, really keep in mind. I think another thing that's really important is about transparency. We hear a lot about transparency up here and how important it is, how really important it is. I'm very excited to see in the consent agendas that we now have, we have committees, committee, uh, uh, summaries that are coming in, that we actually can read what our committees are doing. In my opinion, they should actually be discussed here at this table because it's, um, why we're here. Uh, in the last meeting, I wasn't here. My father was in the hospital, so I couldn't come. But the time before that, one of the gentlemen stood up at the end of the meeting and he said, you know, I learned the most because of the argument that was going back and forth between council member Viner and council member Gallagher. And I thought to myself, well, that's good, actually. It's actually good to have those kinds of conversations where our community actually learns something. I think it's good to have debate. I think it's good. I think it's important. In my world where we debate solutions, the debated solutions are usually stronger than the very first one put up. Because we talk about the weakest link in the solution and look for ways to make it stronger. When you, when you're in an echo chamber and all you can do is just agree, you have to agree or you have to agree. It, it doesn't create necessarily the most crudit solution. I think it's important to be, to be able to have debate. One thing that I would also, and, and this transparency, to see this transparency is good. There's always one committee piece that's, well, there's two committees that actually I think are important that are missing. But there's a committee, there's a committee piece that's missing. We, and council member, uh, I think council, uh, council member Caulfield is the chair of the finance committee. Who else sits on that committee? I don't remember.
Me.
You do. We never see a monthly report from finance. And we never hear, you know, just in overall about finances, other than financially, we, we are, have some struggles and we have some work to do financially. We all know that. I'm not sure we'll talk about it as openly as we should, but quite frankly, there's work to do in the finances here. And I think that we should have more transparency, um, in that space. Now, jokingly, I would ask you, how did the water bill affect you? But we know the water bill doesn't affect you because it's, you're not being affected by the water break reasons. Um, because you don't live in the city. Um, so, uh, I just make that comment. The other bit of transparency that, that I would talk about is, um, well, it, it's not really about transparency. It's just about debate. Um, and I think that, you can see here, we have some frustration because I continue to talk. But I would give a little bit of a warning. I would give a little bit of a warning. I think some changes are going to be coming down that I wouldn't support. Um, I think that we've, we've seen some movements where we have some of the other council members who would like to change the mayor's role from a two year term to a four year term. Uh, I'm not sure that's the right way to go, but I also think that you'll see some, some, some things also that you should be looking out for in the community is, I think the mayor has a desire to change the overall, um, charter. And I think those changes in that charter would, would, would look to empower those that have power and diminish those that are just less, less voices in there. And my recommendation is to keep an eye and watch. Watch to see if those, if that charter request for charter change is coming and where those changes sit and why, really question why. Um, and there's also been some comments about limiting the amount of conversation that we can have here. My personal experience here is why, is, is there's been an awful lot of discussion, an awful lot of time put into trying to over speak me when I speak. Uh, if we want to talk about Roberts Rules, the rules are that if you have the floor, you're not supposed to be interrupted. You're supposed to wait. There's a lot of interruption that goes on here. Um, and then in terms of, um, from, from my perspective, there was a lot of work about looking to quiet my voice, which is fine, you know, if, if you want to, you can. Uh, but I'm going to take advantage of this last moment I have and fortun them for it, um, a little bit. But every committee, every committee that I sat on, except for the police committee, the mayor here either removed me from that committee or she, um, she either removed me from the committee, that was, or she, um, looked to, um, either just like, don't have the committee meet. For example, the ordinance committee, I sat on the ordinance committee. During a period of time over the last eighteen months, we've pushed through the largest zoning changes in our community ever. And we've made our ninety nine percent developed community redevelopment ready. We spent almost, our, our, our city assistant manager spent eighteen months trying to push through that, that ordinance. Uh, and, and he did, and he was successful doing it. But not once during that period of time did the ordinance committee meet, and I had questioned why. So when we talk about transparency, the word is a nice word, but I'm not sure always that it's there. And, 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 and this meeting is where it's supposed to happen. In this meeting is where it's supposed to happen. Uh, and it's worked hard to keep the meeting short as opposed to having the real dialogue that's there. So. Anyway, um, I'm happy to have my, my final words there. Um, but again, the most important of that is the community itself, and it's the main. But again, the most important of that is the community itself, and it's an amazing community. It's been great to me, it's been great to my children. They're doing tremendously well, which I'm really proud of. I stood our weight and I want to thank you all, so appreciate your time.
Thank you, council member Gallagher, and I would like to wish you the best in your next chapter and thank you for your service. Also, I have a couple of, a handful of items here. One, I agree that it's great to have the reports that are contained in the council packet there. And I also appreciate the fact that we're doing an employee spotlight. We really do need to celebrate the quality staff that we have in this month at Wes Kelly and in our water billing department. And she's probably been the hardest working of all in, in the last couple of months. So just to give her a shout out for all the work that she's doing and her commitment to customer service despite being under the most difficult of circumstances. And I know, just so the community knows too, there, there was a gap in responses at one point because she'd lost her father, right? So just so that the community knows that. And she weathered through all of that and still continues to have a great attitude and shows up every day. So thank you, city manager Seisland, for calling out our quality employees. We look forward to that continuing to happen. Also, city manager Seisland, thank you to your wife Claire for sharing you with us tonight. I believe today is your wedding anniversary, so this is a very romantic way to spend it. And just wanted to thank you for being here despite that family obligation. Also, would like to take a minute to acknowledge Judge Darbo, who is ending his term of service. And I know that all of the folks that are going to be, are benefiting from his leadership. He's really going to help Mr. Parnell transition in well and still spending all of the time necessary to fulfill the job obligations, including swearing in the deferred public safety, or safety patrol. So thank you to Judge Darbo for his very long term of service. Clerk Bowler, thank you for your leadership. I know this is crunch time for you with the election approaching. So we have every confidence and no worries at all that that will not go well. So please, if you need any support for that, I know we're all here and we're, we're, we're celebrating you and the work that you and Danielle and the rest of your team do. We have October 25th, it's Halloween in the park. I know we, I, it'll be the second year that I can't make it. I'm very bummed about that because it's one of the most amazing days of the year. But I hope the community enjoys that and thank you to the team for pulling that off. Also, I had an opportunity to attend the Goodfellas Breakfast this past week. One of our Own Ghost Point Park residents is serving as the president of that wonderfully esteemed organization whose motto is no kitty without a Christmas. So if you're looking for something special to support with the holidays approaching, I would encourage you to look at that. And then I thought it was also important to, to speak a bit to the recent appropriation that was secured through Senator Hertel. In fact, we did invite Senator Hertel to join us this evening, he had a conflict. But we wanted to applaud him for his leadership and the work that he has done to bring to dollars back to our community. He has secured more over, a tall, cumulatively, 100 and million, $100 million for local water infrastructure. And most recently, in this current budget, a $1.7 million grant was approved for the SCOP Center and ensuring that it not have an unnecessary impact on our overall infrastructure. So that will be a positive. Another thing to celebrate was his success at securing dollars for Selfridge, for the Shoreline and for the Gross Point Public School System. So thank you to Senator Hertel for his participatory leadership. And I think, council, we're seeing these dollars come back because of the work that we've all done to ensure we have relationships with our elected officials and that they know that we are here and have needs. And I would just, so you all understand, there's complexity to the appropriations process. I don't think it's always apparent. There's a lot of, there's a formula that includes a lot of objective and subjective factors. It's not as easy as taking your priority list and you're weighted just and saying, this is what we want. You know, it's a very nuanced process that have lots of factors playing into it. So I think it's important to acknowledge that, you know, it's not one thing for the other. But I do believe that, that Senator Hertel really understood all those nuances and did his best to ensure that we secured a number of resources for the community. And as specific to the SCOP Center, in recent years, there's been tremendous, I think, leadership, especially by this board and, or this council and certainly the administration, to make sure that there's a balance between the taxpayer dollars and that are utilized and directed towards projects like that and the benefit that comes from it. So the concerns of the past, I think, have been resolved and it's really time to move on and understand that the project's being properly managed as it relates to the city's role and making things happen. And we have a $45 million cultural institution that's about to open its doors. And I think it's in all of our benefit to celebrate that and know that we are going to be a destination. Those sorts of institutions aren't opening throughout the country, they're closing. And we get to have that right here. The list of programming partners is impressive, it's varied, grassroots and community minded. Everybody from the Detroit Opera to the Gross Point Symphony, to Mosaic Youth, to the DSO, to Quavic, to of course, our wonderful Gross Point Theater, to the DP TV and so many more. And I think that that alone is the accountability that we need to ensure success and to ensure that all taxpayers are benefiting. And as it relates to infrastructure too, the, the, the body dedicated $600,000 to the sewer separation, I don't think that's always known as well. So this appropriation from Senator Hertel is an excellent complement to that. I'd urge you all to get on the SCOP Center's website to learn more about the measures that have been deployed to ensure that it not be a negative on our infrastructure system, but a neutral to a positive one. So again, just trying to make sure that, that truthful and fair narratives are out there and that we kind of move away from some of those narratives that were, you know, at one time I had a basis to them. But you know, we've all been very committed to making sure that it be properly managed. So with that, I will stop, but certainly wanted to try to lend some clarity to that process so that it's understood how those appropriations decisions are made. And to thank Senator Hertel for being on Team Gross Point Park and Team Gross Point and Team Shoreline and Team Selfridge to make sure that we have resources coming back to our community. And hopefully we'll be able to get him to a future meeting to, to share a little bit more in his voice as to how he went about. Because, and I think I also urge you all, he can't, he can't advocate alone. You know, again, that complicated mosaic, it's each of our voices, it's each of your voices. All advocating for what you feel is important, it's not just him. So if you feel strongly about something or you have a priority, please make your voice heard. And I urge each of my individual council members to do the same so that it is clear and it is evident about what the priorities of the community are. So with that, council, I think we're ready for adjournment.
If councillor could read the, if councillor could read this.
I can, I'm happy to do it if you would like me to. Yeah, so the City Gross Point Park code of conduct in the bylaws for the council states, avoid debating with citizens at public hearing. The purpose of public hearing is to receive their information and your opinion. You will have your opportunity later to state your position and rebut any information or argument that you feel needs it during council comment. Give the appearance and feel it too of encouraging individuals to express themselves. You can help by looking directly at the person talking and by using nonverbal cues such as nodding affirmation and physically leaning in the direction of the speaker. At the same time, avoid such negative nonverbal cues such as scowling, reading, checking your phone messages, talking to another trustee or using facial expressions that suggest ridicule or contempt. I understand that it says debate and I think that that's where you're taking an issue here. But it's very clear that the intent is that there should be no back and forth whatsoever. There should be no reply to the comment, that should be safe for council comment. It's a very, very clear in the code of conduct, which I understand that all of the council members had signed.
It's our training.
Well, and the training that I've received on Roberts rules supports that.
I agree, and I do know.
Roberts rules also does support. One moment, Ms. Gallagher, that is, that is the best practice for meeting management. And that's always what we tend to strive for, is the best practice.
Yeah, and Roberts rules, I mean, itself doesn't say that because it mostly deals with motions. But the recommendations all say, under no circumstances should there be any back and forth exchanges. Council members should refrain from speaking during this portion of the meeting. The recommendation is always take in what the public is saying. And then at the conclusion of that, have the time specifically for the chair. It's actually supposed to be the chair that speaks in response. And any comment should be directed to the chair if you have disagreement with that. But that for all council members, not the chair, that time to speak is during council comment.
Like just now.
Exactly.
Like when I was speaking to her and.
Yeah, and that was perfectly appropriate.
So just to be clear, it's not Roberts rules that say that, it's our bylaws that.
I never said it was our bylaws.
Yeah, I, I think.
No, I did not.
No, I know you did not. I, I know you did not, but I heard it at the table. So I just wanted to make clear and so that we could read it. And it says not to debate, but, because I mean, we're, we can, we can respond to the people, but we can't.
You shouldn't have back and forth.
Questions, but.
There should not be any comments back and forth.
It should, it, yes.
Oshin to adjourn.
People like, excuse me?
Oshin to adjourn.
Like really?
Yes.
Really, I know what he asks. I don't know, one third, a second. Okay, you don't like debate, right? You don't like discussion.
Is that what it is, Max? Clerk, can you please call the roll? Councilmember Kohler?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallagher?
Yes.
Councilmember Beener?
Yes.
Councilmember Driever?
Yes.
Councilmember McMillan?
Yes.
Mayor Hyatt?
Yes, motion carries, we are adjourned at 9:01 PM. Thank you all.